Hey, good evening everyone and welcome to the February 24th, 2020 meeting of the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So we'll open our Finance Committee meeting officially at 6:32 and we'll flip it over to Mr. Darling.
Also, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting with the Finance Committee and School Committee for Monday, February 24th and 6:30. We just let folks know we will be going into executive session and at the end of this meeting, we will not be returning if we open session. And we do have one announcement that Senator Simonti will be holding the caucus hours at Town Hall tomorrow from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock in the conservation room. And also for our board discussion, we do have to announce that the closing of the town meeting warrant will be on February 28th, 2020. Andrew Valdronas for the Board of the Leaguants.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And just as soon as the selectman's meeting is ending, I want to go up in form this evening. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Let me just pull them chairs up to make this.
Sure, okay.
Good evening, Susan Gilpatrick, Town Clerk. I just wanted to announce that this week we do have early voting during regular business hours of the Town Hall, so tonight we're here till 8 o'clock. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday will be 8:30 to 4:30 and Friday, 8:30 to noon time. And we're having it in the first floor in the Selectmen's Conference Room, so it's much easier for people to get to. And also Presidential Primary is Tuesday, March 3rd. The polls will be open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and that will be at the junior, senior high school in the gymnasium. And one last thing is the census has been coming in great, but we still have about 1,300 outstanding. So in order to save on the second, save postage for second mailing, if you haven't got it in yet, please return your census. Thank you.
So, just a question, how many people do you have so far for the early voting?
We've had 156 people today so far.
Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no one else is there for open forum, I'll close open forum and go to the finance committee.
Thank you. All right, well, our one agenda item tonight is to hear the budget presentation from the School Committee, so we probably bring it, easy to bring a couple chairs up.
I brought the same presentation that I gave to our School Committee on February 24th. I thought that we were gonna have, I thought we were gonna be downstairs in the Selectmen's room so that you would have this up on the screen. It is not, but we did have, I did do some copies for you. I'll highlight mostly, we're here for the, for Finance, so I'll highlight most of those screenshots that are dealing with that. We won't have to go through all of them unless you want me to. But I want to thank you for inviting us to talk about our 221, our 21 budget for the pre-K through 12 school district. Where we are today, we follow our strategic plan. We have four pillars, curriculum instruction, social, emotional wellness, professional development, and technology. Those are the four areas that we concentrate on and those are the four areas that drive our budget. Our FY 2020 budget, salaries at $17,699,604, our non-salaries at $3,180,291. Our budget this year was at $20,879,895. Our busing this year was at $912,600 and our total is $21,792,495. Page three, these are just some statistics that we have from our SIMS report that we report out. This is from our 219 SIMS report on our enrollment, how many teachers we have. The number of teachers we have is up from 154, we had 183 teachers. Our absent, our attendance rates, we won't get those to the end of the school year, but we, we're a little bit lower than the Massachusetts State Average. We're at about eight days averaging for a student. I'd like it to be less, of course, but a little bit high on that. Page four, our graduation rate is around, is around 93 percent. We're working on that. We are a school that is moderately progressing. They did change the rankings a few years ago. If you remember, achieving standard, made the standards, exceeding the standards. Now it's school of recognition, meeting or exceeding the target, substantial progress, moderate progress, limited or no progress, focused, targeted, and broad comprehensive support. Right in the middle, as you can see, we're about, we're at the 49th percentile of the state. We're making moderate progress. We are looking at different subgroups on how to make the progress move. We did have a little uptick of ELL students, so we find that that's an area that we'd like to move, but really it's students that are disadvantaged or IEP students, they call them under the, under the state, under DESI, on the accountability standards and on the report card. So we will, we're looking at those students and how to support them and more, we're looking more in as the inclusive practice schools and having more students in the inclusive classroom instead of separate.
Can you just, for my, my purposes, define what the accountability standards are?
Attendance, graduation rate, and how well kids do throughout the year on MCAS.
Compared to the state averages?
Compared to the state average, yeah. And a lot is how many students, we have about 21 percent of our student population has an IEP. We're a little bit higher than the state average. That's something we have brought down. We used to be at about 27 percent when I first got here. We've brought that down and we're still looking and bringing that down. We're being very rigorous on our, on how we classify students. We don't want to just put a student or recognize a student with an IEP because of a behavior issue or maybe a student that needs a little bit more time. So we're really holding our standards for a more rigorous way of tiered system of holding our teachers, our staff accountable and holding kids waiting to identify a student as IEP. So that's, that's really where that classification comes in. What we did with our funding for this year, we spent money in curricul, our curriculum instruction cycle, as you know, that, that's a cycle, a review cycle, and last year it was for physical education and wellness. We spent $56,000 in that curriculum instruction area. This year, we had to wait for the frameworks to come out from DESI for the physical education and wellness. Those are, that curriculum is being put in place as we speak. Social Studies is in the review cycle now and we did replace science equipment last year for consumables as the students use them in labs. We continue to replace equipment and equipment that has been used or no longer able to use. We are replacing as we come. We had new hires and we continue to fill the academic positions. We just hired, we, nursing has been a tough spot for us to fill. We were without a nurse this year. We just hired two nurses and that's, that's been a big, it's been a tremendous help for us. And we are working with the North River Collaborative and we are, we got some social workers working with the North River Collaborative instead of, we work with them and it's a lesser rate to hire someone from the, from the collaborative than it is for me to hire another FT, another teacher. We continue with our professional development. We continue with our ready math training, our Inclusive Practices Academy, our Universal Design Practice School, our book clubs, and we've offered over 175 workshop. That doesn't mean that we hold them all here in the district, but we do go outside the district. We, our teachers can go online and the, and the district supports that. And in the data, in our data area, we have a panorama platform. We brought in a new platform for teachers to be able to go up on panorama and to see a child, to look at their social and emotional and their academics all on one screen, so you know where the student is coming from, where they're going, where their strengths are, where their weaknesses are, where they need help. If the student has allergies, if they have an IEP, if the student has a 504, everything's in front of them if they take medication. Just saying, it just says nurse, it doesn't say what type of medication or for what, it just says nurse at times. So it's a great platform, we're using it more and more, we're getting a little bit better with it. It's new to us and we're trying to find our strengths and weaknesses with it, but it is helping us to identify our own strengths and weaknesses as instruction, for instruction. Where you, our funding goes for the MAP data, our MCAS data, DIBELS and School Brains, and that's just to keep all of our technology working so the students can, and we need to continue with, to buy those licenses every year.
What's DIBELS again?
That's the reading test for the elementary. New accomplishments, last year, we put in, we opened up a reserve fund two years ago. Last year, we had a exit, or we were over budget by, had a, under budget, we had $6,000 left over. We put that in our sped reserve. We hope that we'll be able and maybe a potential increase that the town will help fund that at $100,000 this year. Our MSBA projects came in under budget. The Central School Boiler was under budget. We're just getting the commission, we're almost done on the commissioning on that, so we should see that in a couple of weeks. And we've also been approved by the MSBA to go forward with our, the new roof. That would be in the summer of F21, summer of '21. We've upgraded our security system at the Mitchell School. We are working on more robotics for the kids at both Mitchell and the high school, and we even have some steam carts going into the Central School. Our steam lab at the Mitchell School has just, has flourished. Mrs. Cameron's doing a great job down there. Mrs. Fisher's bringing it throughout the district for us. It's getting a lot of use. The kids are really loving just to be activated learning. It's a great tool for us. It's really helped us in a lot of areas, social, emotional, and the academics. The flexible seating, it doesn't seem like that's a new accomplishment, but it's really great for the kids from pre-K through 12. Everybody wants to think that schools are still with desks and just putting them in a chair. We have beanbags, we have stools that kids can move around on. Some are soft, some are hard, some are, some have fur on them, some have, some are like gel, and they're for students that need something different and they learn at a different rate and are motivated differently. So it may not seem like a big deal, but it is a big deal. And we've seen that it is helping a lot of our kids, especially in the younger grades. Our curriculum review cycle this year, we are looking at the social studies frameworks and the books if, that we were to purchase or what types of materials or consumables that we'll purchase pre-K through 12. They are out in circulation right now and we'll be coming up with a decision on that sooner than later. I know right now, I did speak to Dr. Williams prior to getting in here today, she did tell me that they're looking at what they're gonna do with ELA next year, because ELA is across the board. They feel like they've been in this curriculum cycle really hammering it in over the last couple of years, especially with the physical education and wellness. They've done a lot of work in that area, but the social studies is a big area to push, especially at the high school level because of the civics, because of the broadness of it. So they are looking at if that will be starting mid-year next year to the following year. So they're, and she has a professional development academy. We also work with the principals and then their, their lead teachers, so we're hearing a little bit of that and we'll know a little bit more by the couple more weeks. These are the, on the page six, you'll see that some of the professional development opportunities we gave out and that the student, that the teachers have opportunity to take. But the, the crux of this evening's meeting is why, why and what do we need a 21 financial increase for? Well, we have an out of district placement for students. We need to enhance support for social, emotional, so we need additional adjustment counselors and nurses, and I think that we fulfilled the nurse positions this year and I think we're gonna be in good, good space. I don't think we're gonna have to add a nurse, but it did come in this year, so it will be an added expense. We need to continue and maintain and upgrade technology for both students and teachers. We need to support the NEAS accreditation, our five-year success plan. We are looking at getting a security guard for the junior, senior high school, a new behavior, another behavior specialist at the Mitchell School, and we will need another ELL teacher. And then, and of course, always, all the retirements that, we have three right now retiring and we will continue to fill those positions. The reason we need nurses and adjustment counselors, we had 8,322 visits to the nurse. We had 2,798 med visits. This is one North River social worker's program or her sheet that she keeps. She's had 19 referrals. The number one reason she sees referrals are behavior management. She's had scheduled 69 visits and 54 of those were crisis. 67 have been staff consultations, meaning talked to 67 staff members pre-K through 12 for, on a student issue. So we're seeing a lot more in the social, emotional area. So where do we want to go tomorrow? Our salary will, will increase to $18 million. Our non-salary will increase to $3,324,101. The new positions, $292,000, which I, which we've discussed to be funded with school revolving funds, so that we can get those positions in the budget because of the behavior and emotional issues that stu, social, emotional issues that students are carrying, the traumatized child. We're looking at school budget is $21,794,223,000. Our busing is gonna stick at 924,300, so the total is $22,718,523.
When you say revolving funds, what revolving funds?
We have school choice, less revolving, which pays most of the, pays most of our blessing. We have like food revolving account that she pays most of her, for the new equipment that we get in for the cafeteria, she pays for most of that. We got a new hood last year, we got two new ovens that can go much quicker. The Central School is, I don't know if you've ever been in that kitchen, it's antiquated, there's no running, there's no stove in there, so we had to buy, you know, some burners for her.
Not using buns and burners anymore?
Yeah, that's what, that's what it looks like in there. What would be another revolving?
Athletic.
Athletics, building use.
Building use.
We pay for most of the overtime on the custodial with building use. Those are our big ones. School choice is big.
And that's when other towns pay us for their children?
We have about 36, we, we bring in 36 students a year and we have about, between 28 to 36 students going out on an average a year.
And when you say going out, does that include to the vocational school too?
No.
What is, what is the, what's happening with our vocational school population, people who choose to go to Southeast Regional? Has that gone up?
It's, well, it's gone down from 10 years ago, but over the last year, our, our eighth grade class was, was large, very large, and ninth grade is when they go to vocational. So we start, we did see an increase this year of maybe eight students going to Southeastern.
That's not as large as it was 10 years ago.
It's not as large.
Is that, you think, due to some of the shops that you put back into the school? You know, woodworking had fallen apart, all that stuff years ago, this was years ago.
I think it's a little bit more competitive at the vocationals, even though, you know, we apply, the kids need to apply there, they need to have the grades to go there, they need to have the attendance, there's, they have their own, you know, criteria and expectations of a student going to the VoK. Even though that we aren't paying to go to the VoK, there's still an expectation. The Aggies have increased as well. We have a few kids that go to Bristol, Aggie and the South, Norfolk. So, you know, we, we certainly want to keep our kids, but they're, we do not have the vocational aspect that the VoKs have. I mean, we don't have the HVAC licenses, we don't have those types of licensures or certificates to give to students. And I think the, the vocation is a great way, is a, is a wonderful vocation, whether you want to be a plumber or whether you want to be a builder. I mean, this building up here, Southeastern's building the police annex, you know, so I mean, that's wonderful and I think there's one of our students that is here on a daily basis building. So, I mean, the great hands-on skills that you, you know, we had a couple of girls, we have a, we have a nursing cohort at our, at the high school. We had three girls that went to Massasoia over the last two years. They leave half-day and they go up and take nursing classes and now they're already a CNA, you know, and they're gonna get their RN. And they're gonna be like almost 22, they'll be 22 when they get their RN. So I mean, just terrific, you know, so we're trying and we're, we're looking at more avenues to support that.
Good, good.
So new positions, our census isn't in on kindergarten right now. We have seven kindergarten classes. We have over, we have about 142 students in kindergarten. Our census is not complete on kindergarten, but I don't know if you have heard this, but we, we did talk about pre-K. We've opened up another five-day, full-day pre-K program. So now we're running two full-day, five-day programs. So if that's any, if that's, and that's tuition-based. So if that's any indication, our parents are working and they need, they need someplace for their child, children to go. Our pre-K is a terrific program. I can't say enough about Central School, but our census isn't complete on kindergarten. Grade three, we need a special education teacher. Grade five, we, we had a retirement, so we're going to be putting a grade five in with the grade five special ed. Junior high school, senior high school, math and science. There was a movement about a year ago from a teacher that we had teaching in one area and had to be moved to another area. And the way that the MCAS are located in the testing and what they're, what we're seeing in 10th grade, what, how they're testing, we need to address some concerns on the science side for environmental science and we also need to look into higher mathematics. So we're trying to, we, we did have a couple of people apply for this position that have the dual certification, so we are looking at that right now, so we can fill in those, those both gaps. We are looking at adjustment counselor. The nurse, I think we've taken care of that in this year's. It will show up again, but we do believe that we've taken care of it and we are still waiting on the junior, senior high school schedule just to be, the students will be picking their classes.
So when you say taken care of, is it to identify the need and to fund it?
Yeah.
Because school nurses are hard to find.
They are very hard to find. We found two, it was, we have been looking for two years for nurses. I don't know if you, you see it all the time, I have Mrs. Benner put it up on Facebook, we put it on our homepage, we put it in the paper. I've asked other school districts, asked the collaboratives for help. We couldn't find anyone and it just happened, I don't know if the stars aligned one day, and two nurses walked in at the back-to-back and we hired both of them because we said we don't care, we, we have to do this. We have so many students that need help. And to your, to your question, Dave, is, I'm also looking at the adjustment counselor and the nurse. I do feel that the nurses do such a great job with talking to students with maybe anxiety and maybe some angst, that they don't need, we might be able to, to work a little bit of that together, because sometimes a student just needs to be taken out of class for a few minutes and maybe the nurse can help instead of just a counseling session. So we are looking at a little bit of that and, and we're identifying, will it work, will it not work? Is it, I don't want to put a Band-Aid in. That's not what we want to do. We want to make sure that students are supported so they, so they want to be with us and they also feel supported so that they can grow academically. So.
Just, just to be clear, what we are presenting to you for your approval is a status quo budget. So these positions that we're not in the line items that we presented to you, we're paying off with these from school choice.
From school choice. But they will cut, but, I know that, I know that, this is what, the difference between him holding me to the line and being the superintendent saying, I'm gonna try to get them in that budget in the next year. I don't want to continue that, I cannot continue to fund positions through school choice. I won't do that to the district and I won't do that to the town. I think that happened in the past. It's not the right thing to do, but when I see students with social, emotional issues and I see inclusion works and, and not separate, you know, separating students and having, I think, we need, I, we need teachers with special education degrees, with specialized techniques, but students need to be with their peers. They shouldn't be, you know, resource rooms are great to be pulled out to get some extra help, that's wonderful, but students should, needs to be with their peers to have academic success. So we are working on those types of things, but in the long run, everything needs to be put into that budget. So, but if I can, if I can sort of jumpstart it with school choices, certainly, we want to do that. But our assumptions for the FY 21 budget is to increase support for social, emotional needs, special education out of district. We, just a reminder, on the out-of-district placements, we do not have, or out-of-district placement services, any place that we send a student, they can increase their tuition anytime. The collaboratives, they work with us, so we're mostly, we're on those boards or we're at those meetings, so we can hold them in a range, but the out-of-district placements, they can charge any tuition rate that they want. The state does not hold them to any, any system, any monetary value system. And we, we had a student out of district for over $225,000 a year.
Some of them they do.
Yeah.
It was the Operational Services Division which covers the rates of private institutions, but many times we'll see over year after year that these places petition them for increases of rates and we, and they, they, the OSD pretty much grants them. I mean, we had one student last year that halfway through the year got a tuition increase of over $20,000. That just we need, we need to take into account if I cut elsewhere.
I, I mean, we have, we have 21 out-of-district students now, as of today, in one 45-day placement.
Those 21 out of districts don't include, they don't include the Aggies or Southeastern?
No, that's IEPs, so, but those 20.
Just as special.
That's special ed, yeah. And we don't, you know, we don't know how much those costs are gonna be on a yearly basis. These students, those 21 out-of-district students are those students that we cannot, we don't have a classroom for them. I wish that we did, but we, we do not. What they require, we, we just could not fund it in the district level. We are looking at a transitional program. Those are for students, as you know, that the age has increased, for students to be able to stay in public education until their age is 22. And many collaboratives are offering transitional programs, which we, we're going to try to start a, our own transitional program with two students that will be coming of age in the next year to, next year. We hope to be able to facilitate transitional work opportunities for them, help them job opportunities, help them work, integrate them into socialness of everyday life and then maybe getting a job, and the collaboratives will help with that. We're, we're a member of North River and we're also at REEDS. We're trying to maintain current class sizes. I certainly don't want to lay off teachers, that's nothing, I don't want to do that and I want to maintain what we have now. Class sizes are 19 at the Central School, 17 in the kindergarten, that's where she should be, that's where we, that's state. That's where she should be, that's where, that's state. I think our highest class level at central school is about twenty-two, but are averaging between around twenty. I should say it's nineteen point six to twenty-one. We have, we do have one at twenty-two. At the Mitchell School, we're between twenty-two and twenty-six. At the high school, we do have some higher numbers. We, we still sometimes see a class at between twenty-eight and thirty-two at the high school. And it's because we may only have a certain number of teachers teaching that course, so there's only so many, so many spot offerings in the schedule. Trying to meet contractual obligations. And right now, we are in negotiations, we are in mediation with the EBEA.
So, what is the average class size in the high school? I know you've mentioned there's a few that are high, but there's gonna be some.
I think the average, the average is probably around twenty-six. But you have, we, you know, we do have some high-class numbers at thirty-two. There might be, I mean, you might have an out, an outside chance of a thirty-four. We're not in the forties like we were. We've gotten them to come down. That's one of the reasons for the math and science teacher. The sciences were getting high, maths were getting high. The new schedule has given us some flexibility, but it also has cornered us in a couple of areas. So, we need to, you know, we look at every avenue on this. But right now, the number of teachers that we have in each of the disciplines, we're holding our own. I don't need additional. The math and the science, we had already gone down, and we'd never had added there. We added in English, we added social studies a couple of years ago. We did add a math. Seventh and eighth grade, we've had to add a few, because the eighth grade, as John said, was very large a couple of years ago. We have another big, we have another large class on its way. The kindergarten from three years ago was at one-seventy-seven. They're still hanging at one-seventy-six right now, so they're on their way. They're in fourth grade now, so they'll be, fifth grade now, so they're on their way to the high school, so that'll be a big class.
So, you've got three of the biggest classes we've had in a long time, and one in freshman year now, and then two more right behind it.
You got them right behind, yep. You have one year, you get a little reprieve next year, and then it gets large again, and then large, then really large, that kindergarten class that came in.
And we haven't had a large class like that in five or six years.
Right. So, we're, you know, that, when we see that uptick, we don't want those classes of thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight. However, we do have the enrollments, we are watching it. And John does a nice job of, of, of looking at, say, you know, we've had an upswing here, down, up and down. What are we averaging at? And we get a lot of work, and we get a lot of help from Kate Byrne, our central school principal, let us know what's coming in as quickly as she can. This, the preschool is really where we're seeing, we, we know that, you know, if you're gonna see, you know, two, two classrooms of ninety-nine to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five students in that pre-k, that, that's gonna give you a hundred and fifty, one sixty, one seventy in your kindergarten, so.
And that's just for EB residents, right?
Yep.
I know, Dave, maybe we gotta do some more fifty-five and over community.
Yeah, they're bringing a lot for our.
Some people think that the pre-k is, they tax their money, but it's self-sustaining also.
It's tuition-based.
Yeah.
If there's any questions, I know that you have the line items. I know if there's any questions at this time.
Have you, is this including, are you increasing any fees or anything at the school? There's no plans to do that?
No, I, I, I hope, I would.
I didn't print them off everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I emailed them, but.
Um, no. I, I think that, I think that the, the fees that we charge now are sustainable for our community and sustainable for our parents. Our athletic revolving account pays for a lot, a lot of the busing in athletics. We take out of there, and, and the equipment and things like that, that's, that's coming from. And, and we are public, you know, and I, I, I know that every school is pay-to-play now. I, I hate to even say that, because we are public schools, but our families pay for the buses, we don't wanna increase on that. We certainly don't wanna increase our fees in, in the cafeteria. She doesn't really, Deb Vaughn does not have a choice. If, if Desi or the state says we have to go up a little bit, she has to go with what they tell us, especially because we don't have enough free and reduced lunch to help us to get much more money.
What are the programs that some of the towns, like I know Brockton, Wareham, what are they getting, the programs that they're getting where they're getting lunches covered for the district?
Because they have ti- um, Title I, ninety-nine percent. I mean, Brockton, everybody gets free breakfast and free lunch. They have a high ELL population.
Yeah.
They have a very high IEP population, students with disabilities, and so that will give them increased funding.
So, that's something at a certain point, if you hit those levels, it would just be triggered through the state or the federal government to.
Yeah, we're, we're, I think it's forty percent.
Yes.
For free and reduced lunches. We not even, we're in twenty, we're like twenty-four percent. And we have a, and we, we continue to tell parents, please, please, apply for it. It doesn't mean anything, you just apply for it. If you get it, you get it, if you don't, you don't. There are some, some families who, who don't wanna do that, and we still, we help the child out if, if we feel that they need that. It's not a stigma, it's, that's what we're supposed to do. I don't want a child to go hungry, or to feel hungry in a classroom. But no, I don't increase, I don't see any increase on revolving accounts. I mean, we want kids to play, we have over four hundred students this year sign up for sports and play athletics. It's important. Our, our, our band is growing. I hate to even say that Mr. Ponte is retiring this year, 'cause he's such a great advocate for the band, for the jazz band, the concert band. The whole, I mean, even drama, I mean, is, is growing. And we have a lot of kids involved in that, Mickey Laskey does a great job with that. These are things for kids to stay after school, to be involved, to be with their peers, not be home, and, and not being involved. And that's what I find most, that's where we find a lot of social-emotional issues. Kids are alone, on devices. I mean, that's great, but be involved with your friends after school. We're trying to, we're looking at doing a, maybe a small, four-week intramural program at the Mitchell School. We've never done intramurals. But we also have third and fourth graders and fifth and sixth graders. For two hours after school, for the month of March, when there's nothing to do, or March into April, before the rec starts with the, the baseball in the spring, and basketball's just ending for the rec league, really like to see us do an intramural program at the Mitchell School to keep kids engaged with us. Parents are working. I, I, you know, if we can support our community, that's what we wanna do.
I have some questions about some of the line items. So, in the past, I believe the textbooks were budgeted through capital. Is there a reason that that changed the operating budget this year?
A, a couple of years ago, we stopped doing that.
Okay.
He asked us to.
Capital?
Yep, he said it really wasn't a capital. Purchase, so.
And they're, they're minor line items compared to the overall size of the budget, but I just noticed that the increase on the copier leases went up pretty astronomically.
It's like my favorite topic, I love to talk about copiers, because we've asked everybody.
I have an assistant that probably spends five hours a week just trying to figure out our copier leases, so.
Go back to Mamie O.
Two years ago, copier leases were three-year contracts and no maintenance for those three years. Two years ago, that stopped. It used to be called a three, three-year buy, big buy. So, you can lease a copier and not have any maintenance. That stopped two years ago, to, they went to one year, three-year contracts, but one year, no maintenance. This is an increase due to, we had a lot of copiers on that three-year big buy, or buyback, I think, that, you know, what they call it. So, these are copiers that are moving from the three-year to the one-year. So, a lot of these are in their second year, where now we're picking up on the maintenance agreements in those copiers.
Was this a state bid program, you're buying off them?
Yep, YTC forty-seven, I know about that.
I'm just curious, 'cause I just finished the copier leasing, it's five, it's five years.
Typically, yeah, well, three's become the norm.
The problem was, schools can't sign a five-year contract without a town meeting vote. So, we got an article on the warrant to give the authority to the town to enter into longer agreements, to consent to the board to selectmen.
Doesn't, I mean, the useful life on those things are much more than three years.
That's why we need to make the change, so we can get a better price.
And can, are we doing like, joint with the town? Because, again, we just had this conversation with everybody else too. And are we, again, as a town, do we have the ability to look at something together to get ourselves?
Yeah, we, I, I, I did bring that up a while ago, and we did look at it a li- a little bit, but there were only, there weren't, there were only a couple leases here, a, a couple of copiers here that didn't really make sense.
Not yet, but.
And I would hope our copier use is going down as we get.
You would like to think that, I, I, I look at.
I haven't seen that.
As I have, I preach.
We ask, I ask a lot, and I ask the principals to go over and see how many, how many copies are being made. And each teacher can, has to put in their log number, so we can tell who's using a lot of paper. I think it has gone down. It's still, I, I would tell you, it's still a lot of paper. You see WB Mason every day pull up in front of one of our buildings.
And these are multi-function machines?
Yep.
To print the copy of.
Oh, yeah, scan, fax. Not that I know of faxes anymore.
Looks at scanning piece, and follow me, print. Because a lot of times, twenty percent of what gets printed never gets looked at, so you don't want it, it just dies after twenty-four hours or whatever.
A lot of the, there were a lot of reductions in the PPS, is that per pupil?
PPS per pupil. That's what most of our special, yeah, that's what most of our special education. So, if you, if you look at that area, you'll see, let's, let's go to five-eight-one, Ben America. You'll see inclusion support, non, non-sted. So, what, what I did, I attempted, because I have to report all these different categories on the end-of-year report, I attempted to clean up the descriptions to make things easier for our accounts payable department, the special ed department, to classify them into the correct categories. So, that's why you see, like, five-eight-one has a, that, what's, what's, has a strike-through, was the old name. And the new one is my attempt at making it a little more easier for everybody to classify expenses. So, like, in the first one, four-ten clinic services, it, no, I said clinic services, but really, what was being expensed to that was psy- psychiatric services. So, I just moved that into one of the other line items, that's why that one went down to zero.
So, you really just kinda did some reclassing from account to account?
And you'll see the same thing, same thing in the IT area. I did, I did the same thing, but that's because Desi came out with a chart of accounts, changes to the chart of accounts. And if you ever wanna look at chart of accounts, you, you can see that they added new charts of accounts. That's why you see all those changes I made in the IT area.
But it, so is there any possibility, like, four-elevens, like, services and evaluations? That's a big reduction. Is there, is it a realistic reduction, is what I'd like to know, or is it, is that something that could come back? And you'd say, you know, at the end of the year, we, we had to provide this, so we, we had to spend it anyway?
Uh, no, that, that's a.
That's a reduction.
That's a reduction.
We're also looking at more of that, because right now, we, we, we have a consultant that does some of those evaluations that comes in. We have school psychologists, but we also work with the Pilgrimage Collaborative, who will bring in an at-risk, bring a site, consultant, that we pay a fee for that person. And then for every home visit they do, we have to also pay an additional fee for the home visit.
And, and I can tell you for that line, that's a reduction, because we are planning on paying for the North River interns through a grant.
And that has been a great program for us.
The, the uptick, I know you ran into an issue with the homeless transportation line item this year. So, this is, I say, out of eighty in this one section, we know that forty's as real as, it's not a switching categories, that's a real uptick.
That's a real uptick. Our homeless transportation this year is probably gonna, is definitely gonna be over seventy-four thousand. We're, we're, we're going to be over budget significantly, significantly in our homeless transportation this year. I took a look, you know, I, I, I tried to be, I tried to take an average. And I'm, I'm hoping, we've, we've got one family that lives pretty far away.
Yeah, we have a family that's coming in from the North Shore. I mean, they're leaving at something at like five-forty-five in the morning to get down here.
Everybody understand what McKinney-Vento is in the homeless transportation?
Probably worth explaining it for the.
So, for fam, so where the child let, lays his head, so, so for East Bridgewater, if a child is here and they lay their head in the district, they belong to East Bridgewater. A child that's in DCF care, or that is homeless, or identified homeless by the state, can stay in the school that they were last in. So, if, if, if DCF, or the state, or any other state agency puts a family in a home, or in a hotel that's in, located in East Bridgewater, and that hotel says, no, you're no longer going to stay here, or a rental facility, and something opens up, like the, like this family up in Lynn, they put them in Lynn, but the children stay in East Bridgewater. So, at five-forty-five in the mor- in the morning, Bill's taxi picks them up, brings them down, drops them off, and comes back and picks them up in the afternoon. So, they're, they're commuting about two hours in the morning and about three in the afternoon to get home through Boston, so. I don't think the state likes that, and I don't think that any school district likes that, and I don't think that the kids like it anymore, driving that far. But those are the rules right now, and that's really what McKinney-Vento is, is where the child was at the, at their last placement.
And that can obviously change on a dime.
Oh, yeah.
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 This, this whole area could change on a dime.
And the thought process is that wouldn't be typically a long, long-term solution. Okay, but we still have to.
You, you do, also, you do see an uptick in that, but there is, the state does reimburse, when I file my, the end-of-year report, I, I would file seventy-four thousand dollars, if that's what it was, and the state would reimburse about thirty-four percent of that, which goes to the general fund.
Are there any other line items like that, that see that type of reimbursement?
Yeah, well, foster care, if we have foster care, I think, there's some reimbursement, foster care. In our capital pro, in our capital project request, we have an E-Rate project. There is reimbursement, fifty percent reimbursement for that, but obviously, that's not in here. I don't believe, other than homeless transportation, I don't. But you wanna get into circuit breaker?
Yeah, that's a good one.
I mean, circuit breaker, there is reimbursement for our tuitions. If, if, if a child hits a certain threshold, we file, in July, we file all the costs for our special ed children. If they hit a, a threshold, the state does reimburse you in the, in the upcoming year. That's called circuit breaker, so there is also a circuit breaker.
What's the reimbursement level on that now? It used to be, last time I looked, it was like, only sixty percent or sixty-five percent.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's not anywhere lower than that, but I think it was sixty-seven. It's not anywhere lower than that, but I think it was sixty-seven. Uh, I was talking about that. Uh, one thing with circuit breaker, they added transportation to it, uh, with the, the new, um, and it's in the budget. They think the reimbursement for transportation, which is a good thing, uh, is twenty-five percent.
Under the salary section, does security pay one thirty-two? Is that separate, I know you had said in the presentation that you wanted to add a security guard at the junior, senior high school. Is that something separate, or is that tied to?
So, in our, uh, two thou- if fiscal year twenty budget, we had, uh, a s- we have, we currently have a security person at the high school. In the twenty, uh, budget, we added a security guard at the Mitchell School. We didn't, we haven't filled that position in yet, because we feel as though all the work that we did, uh, upgrading the security system, uh, took, took care of the need for that there. So, the security guard, we are adding, we would like to add in two thousand twenty-one, is at the high school. So, we have a security guard during the day. We are asking, or, or we will be using, uh, school trace funds, uh, to hire someone in the afternoon and evening.
What's happening is the, the doors are getting, the doors are locked. And, and even on the weekends, then the custodians have to come down, open the doors. It takes them away from their, their jobs.
Kids are propping them open.
Right, kids are leaving them open, and the alarms can go off, but the custodians can't, don't hear them. You know, the, the alarms are in the offices, so you wouldn't hear them. But if we had a security guard that was located at that main entrance, by, down by the gym where the kids go in and out, we would know who's in the building, because we do have people that use the indoor track that go to walk. And if they go through there and they don't see, you know, a student comes up behind them and just holds the door, you might not see it if you're just walking right up to the track. And then the student gets up on the second floor, and we don't know what they're doing. And there's been incidents in other districts, in other areas, um, in, including ours, uh, where kids are in the building, where their parents think they're someplace else. I certainly don't want an assault of any type happening, um, in any of our buildings. But the high school seems to be a very, very, very busy place, from that two o'clock tit to nine o'clock at night. We just left, and I think there was a basketball switch over on the rec league coming out. I mean, I think the third, twelve-year-old, eleven-year-olds were coming out, and we saw cars pulling in. So, I mean, now you're gonna have a different swing in there.
Let me just have one more. And this could just be a swap two under, it was, um, and that's the salary, two oh, two oh nine, two thirteen. Is that just a, the high school secretary's pay went down, but then financial secretary's pay went up?
The high school secretary's pay went down due to.
Retirement, right.
The financial secretary's pay went up because I made a mistake in fiscal year twenty.
So, it's not any to add, it's a standard. Now, I just, this is just out of curiosity. There was a line in that was high school department chairs, and there's one that's high school lead teachers. What's the difference?
We don't have department chairs.
No, I know, but what's the difference, like, they seem.
Well, depart- there was, uh, the department chairs are, um, negotiated in the contract. And they had their own contract when I came to the district five years ago. It was an absorbent amount of money. The principal at the time thought, we, we couldn't have handled it. The budget couldn't have handled it when I first got here. So, we took the department heads out. They also taught less classes. They did help evaluations. We took that out. Principals picked up all the evaluations, um, and then we felt we still needed someone to help and support the curriculum, and to support the needs of other teachers. I believe in department heads. Um, we are looking into it, but again, we're in negotiations. But the lead teachers have supported the curriculum issues and have supported meetings with teachers, and that's really what you need. You need a place where teachers can meet, discuss curriculum, common assessments, um, strength weaknesses of students, um, areas of, areas of need. The evaluations are tough at the high school, because there's so many teachers. There's over, you know, we're almost about eighty teachers at the high school, with a principal and assistant principal. But our special ed administrator evaluates. Our department, uh, our guidance department head, Karen Clifford, she can evaluate. So, we have a few people that we can send out and to evaluate. Uh, but those are the differences.
The lead teacher really focuses on curriculum.
The lead teacher, yeah, and, and has meetings with the principal to disseminate information. And they do meet with the principals, um, in all three buildings. The Central School and the Mitchell School had lead teachers, but it was, they were sort of, they looked different than the high school did many years ago. So, when we went through a real PK through twelve program, now all the facilitators look the same. We have two faci- well, we have facilitators, and we have lead teachers, facilitators. We have one in technology, one in curriculum instruction. They help Dr. Williams, um, drive those instructional areas. And then we have the lead teachers of math, social studies, science, and ELA, um, at the, in foreign language, and phys ed, at the high school. And then you have one in, you have grade lead teachers at Mitchell and Central.
Thank you.
What about the substitute program? I know you had talked a lot about. Um, I know you're looking at a whole new way of doing substitutes, and how will that affect, so I say we're not changing anything in the budget.
So, um, we hired a company that was brand new, well, that, you can't find subs. Not a lot of people are going into teaching, unfortunately. And it's hard to find subs. And we, we give, uh, we're, our sub rates pretty much in line with everybody else. It was, we pay seventy-five dollars a day. If we have someone that's gonna be in a long-term position for longer, we'll up, we'll go up to ninety-five dollars, to a hundred and fifteen, up to one twenty-five to keep that person, especially for maternity leaves. And you might know this right now, I have, um, six maternities out right now, which is a, a little unlikely, because I have it from high school all the way through. Every one of our buildings right now has someone on maternity leave. And they'll be switching over in two weeks or three weeks, uh, to somebody else. But yes, we hired a company that, um, does this, that's all they do, is hire subs. But they hire people that, um, are going into the educational field, or we hope. So, we hired a company called Insight. While negotiating with them, we came up with a deal. They slowed us down, because they thought the language, because of the new, um, hourly rate had changed in Massachusetts. They thought that what we were paying was wrong, so they wanted their attorneys, um, to look at it, and our attorneys look at it. Lo and behold, that, that was part of the issue, but the other issue, they were being bought out by another company. So, this new company came in and bought Insight, and they're called Kelly. Kelly has now, just, just, uh, within the last.
Day.
Day, has engaged with us in conversation and our attorneys. Do I s-
I didn't tell you.
Oh, you didn't.
I received a contract.
Okay, so you received a contract. When that open, listen, we have all these people, we, we've been hiring.
We've been signing.
Yeah. Dr. Williams and I, um, have been relentless at trying to get subs in this district. And I can't, you know, Dr. Williams was meeting every day, for at least, at least two hours a day, whether it's like five minutes here, twenty minutes here, fifteen minutes, and bringing two or three in on a daily basis. We're working with Bridgewater State, we work with Massa Sawyer, we're working with Stone Hill, um, all the area colleges around. We call, um, Dr. Williams, uh, works with, uh, the deans over at Bridgewater State. The class that graduated in December, they call, we have three coming out right now. We said, send them over today. They came down, we signed them up, and we have, uh, two of them right now in a maternity leave.
It has approved since the beginning of the year, beginning of the year of us.
Because why, John? Because Dr. Williams and myself. John sits back and says, oh, you guys gotta get more su- don't get any more subs. But you, we cannot have these kids without subs. You gotta have, you gotta have an adult.
So, is the plan to still kinda go forward with this company?
Yes.
And will that affect the, like, the numbers we already have, will we have to work within?
We don't plan on it affecting.
Okay, 'cause you're gonna be basically paying a rate, you're just utilizing them to find the people.
Yeah, because it, it takes, it just, it's, it's, the human resource as- aspect of it is just too much. Let, you know, let them handle them. Though still, our expectations are still on, you know, for what we want, um, for a teacher, uh, for a substitute. But they'll handle the hiring, getting them, the recruiting. That's the big part, is the recruiting. I mean, we go to Brid- uh, Gina, um, Karen Clifford, and they call, and the principals go down to Bridgewater State for a whole day in May, right before graduation, just spend the whole day recruiting. They have it in the gym. We usually get about fifteen to twenty kids, twenty young teachers, sign up, and here's my resumes, here's this, and, you know, we try to get them to call immediately, try to get them back as soon, as soon as we can. Uh, Wheaton, all the schools along here, we try to, we call.
Is the state requirement still the same for that, that it's anyone who has a bachelor's degree or higher, not even specific to education? Correct, okay.
Yep, can substitute.
Can substitute, right.
No, I'm not interested.
And we also have, um, we do have some, like, students that did their st- uh, did their, um, like, their practicums. Usually, in April, we'll start to see those students who finish up at an elementary school or a high school with their practicum. Their maybe, graduation date may be May fifth. They just finish up their practicum. We'll keep them. We have a couple here right now. We have a, um, at Central School, we have a, a program with Bridgewater State. So, we see their practicum students come through. Lot of, I'd say kids, I guess, 'cause I'm getting old now, but a lot of these kids, they like the elementary level. And most people start there and then work their way up, if they're gonna go, so.
It's a good test drive.
It is, it's a good test drive. It's hard, though. I don't think, uh, whether it's.
Being a teacher's hard.
Whether, whether it's two, second grade or twelfth grade, they, they all have their own, their own issues.
Um, I noticed crisis and security communications were doing away with that, wasn't that?
No, that's just a shift, the shift to a different line item.
Okay, you still have the agency you use? Like a P- yeah, people to help write?
No.
Crisis communications, no?
No, we do them, I do. Or we work with our attorneys if it's. Yes, if it's needed. Every year, we meet with our attorneys in the beginning with our, with our principals. Um, and our central office staff, we have a general meeting, and they'll give our principals, um, templates for different areas. Give me some templates. Mostly, uh, most of the time, if we have something, like a critical situation, we'll go over it with them before any release goes out.
But we don't have any PR.
No.
Okay.
That's why you see the spelling mistakes in the ones I've sent out.
We don't hold it against you. The English teachers might. Could you, um, at some point, doesn't have to be tonight, send us a breakdown, or send me a breakdown of, um, a breakdown of the new positions to come out, so we can kinda be thinking about that?
School choice?
Yeah, yeah, so we can be thinking about that. Go down the line, Melanie, you have any specifics?
No.
No? Did you already ask yours? Your, your quota. Kevin, anything from you? Well, I think what we'll do is we'll probably kinda take some time and digest this a little bit more. Um, and then if we have any questions, I'll leave it, or I'll have my, my crystal, these are liaisons, kinda go back and forth with us. Um, and certainly keep us abreast of any changes that might come up over the next short little time.
Any questions or comments like that?
No, good, good presentation.
Very good. Make sure Liz, with the, um, Chromebooks, the school five years ago. How much of an uptake in the scores are you seeing on DIBBLES, math testing, the other, I mean, I used, I mean, how much?
I don't think the score, I don't think the scores relate to the, the Chromebooks. I think that's, you know, the Chromebooks just help us, 'cause everything's online now. I mean, the next g- next generation MCAS, they're all taking them online. The kids at Central and Mitchell both take the map online. Do I think it helps? I think it just goes quicker. We still hold the kids to the timeline and on it. We wanna make sure the kids are resilient, be able to, to handle and to, to stay into the test and to stay in, to stay with it. Uh, have we seen an increase in test scores, um, because of the Chromebooks? No. But I think it's, it's where, it's where kids are today. I think that's where, that's where they go to. That's their, it's whether it's their phone, or whether it's a Chromebook, or a Kindle to read. They'd rather look at the Kindle than go to the library.
Well, they can get Kindle for that at the library.
That's, um, but. Our Chromebooks, we had, we've got some charging issues right now. With Chromebooks at the high school, we are tr- changing them in. And we continue, we're going with a different, different type of Chromebook. What do we have, Microsoft now?
Uh, HPs.
HPs. They're doing, they're holding the charge better, but there's a, there's a charging issue with, um, the Chromebooks that we have. But we bought extra extension cords, we bought extra everything. We even have docking stations. We had one in the library, we had two, uh, one in the library and one in the caf, where you can put it in, like you've seen in the, in the malls, you can go in, put your security code in, put it in, hook your phone up. Kids love it in the cafeteria, 'cause they can use their phones at that time. They come out, they pull their phones up, and they put them in the charging station. They've been very useful for us. But if they, if the computer doesn't hold a charge, you're gonna have to plug it in no matter what. That's the biggest thing. But no, I haven't seen if, um, I don't think the test scores would go up just because of the Chromebook. You know, that, that comes from the teacher and, you know, and the, and the stick-to-itiveness and the grit that a child puts into it, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. John, you wanna put your chair back?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, of your, um, your, uh, presentation?
I'd just like to put it in.
Oh, Julius, vice chairman.
Thank you, folks. How many years worth of stuff do you have?
I gotta tell you.
We just appear some minutes.
Static so far, the cooperation I've received from the schools discussing budget and sharing information and working with our joint purchasing, so it's all been good, so. Let's hope it stays that way, so, but.
I know Crystal and I have a really good relationship. They've always been very, we fun, we get what we ask for, and.
You have minutes?
Yes.
Very open, very shared.
Keep them together, 'cause they just pass.
Together, together.
Are they stapled, though?
Yeah, sorry. I heard you.
They have to challenge.
Night, thank you, Brian.
So, it'll take a minute or two. February, let's go junior first. Do I, I still owe you one?
Yes.
Okay. Can you remind me?
Sure, please.
Police night?
Please, and fire.
Police and fire? Oh, it was a small one, the least.
Remember what Brian said, can be very summarized. I think we probably.
I would make a motion to accept the minutes from February twelfth and January twenty-eighth as written.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Oh, my lighting.
Hey. Um.
I have sometimes I'm not holding my headphones in, can I do my work usually and then?
So we planned, um, from here on out, we basically planned every Tuesday night. I know we have, we don't have you next Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay, so I have no Dan now. And I think what we're gonna attempt to try and do, uh, the next Tuesday, is I'm gonna try to meet with Brian, and I think we're gonna start trying to go through some of the articles and start getting on those, because I'm just, I'm worried there's so many, and we have to really kind of get going. We have also gonna be working, um, I know Dan's taking a look at DPW, um, a little further.
The spreadsheet's all formula set. I'm just gonna go through and double-check actual spend to requested twenty-one.
Okay. So if, if that's something we can, if there's anything that you think we need to know this week, that'd be good. Fire, um, the fire chief actually came in after I started stop and shop yesterday. Um, came in and spoke with Brian this morning, um, and he's actually already working on some reductions. But I think it probably would be, make sense if, um, fortunately Joe's away this week. But I don't know if that, you might even have some time to sit with him and just understand what those changes were. So you understand them and you're comfortable with them, and you can share that with us. Just say to him, let's stop and shop. Let me not let him buy my bananas. So he's already kind of started the work, but I think if you can go, maybe just have a little bit of chat with him, or however you want to do it, email or a quick visit, um, and get an understanding of what those changes are, I think that would be helpful. So between that and DPW, and then, um, what we can, what I can hope to do is maybe have an update to you maybe by the weekend. Um, and then we can potentially take a look at it, and then we might even be able to spend a little bit of time on it that first Tuesday, that next Tuesday night, um, and looking, and we'll have an update of where we are in closing the gap too.
We don't have health insurance numbers yet, do we?
Getting close, I think.
Because I know when she gave us the timeline, that should have, we should have got them.
The rumblings have started, so I think, I think by Tuesday, we might have something, um, that we're able to actually put in. So we're hopeful that that would be the case. So, yeah, I think, you know, with those kind of major changes that we'll look at, and then we'll have a conversation a little bit more on snow and ice and see what we want to do, given that we still have a deficit to make up and we'll come up with some of those plans. So I hope would be to start the articles and do a little bit more on the actual crunching of the line items of the departments. And we'll start that. And then we won't, obviously, we won't finalize anything until you're back anyway.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah. All right, great. Any other questions or any other updates from any of the departments?
The only one, um, I met with Nancy at the C.O.A. today, um, to go over, um, I wanted to understand the, the grants that she gets. There's not a lot of them, but there's some, and that if those went away, um, what the impact to the program, or the C.O.A. would be, because they really don't use a lot of town, they don't use any town funds to do majority of the programming that they provide, um, to the senior citizens. So, um, it's important, the biggest piece of it is based on the federal census numbers. So hopefully, I mean, we do have an aging population in town, so hopefully everyone fills that out.
But to Sue's point, we still have thirteen hundred outstanding.
Well, this is the federal one, so they won't even get that, she said, for probably two years.
Yeah.
The other thing through our conversation, what, what I kind of thought of was, I'm gonna put together a document, so we went over, she has a couple revolving funds, um, and then these things, and I thought it might be good if everyone did that for their departments. That way if liaisons change, it can be a living document that can go from committee to committee, and that department head doesn't have to sit down with that new liaison and, you know, spend half an hour, forty-five minutes of their time. It's something that you could read and maybe be more prepared in your first meeting.
Yeah, well.
If we'd be willing to do that.
That'd be great if you could actually help with a template too, that can be followed, because Kevin and I certainly had this very similar conversation with the library. You know, everyone's a little different, but I think it kind of just keeps opening the conversation of that we're not getting the whole picture.
Right.
And, and if something should change, you know, how are things gonna be funded?
Yep, right. So, yeah, I'll put something together in the next couple of weeks that we can build.
And, and similarly, um, start thinking about, and I think it plays into that too. Kind of like, if there's a five-year look in your kind of your worst-case scenario, right, what are you looking at? What's the all-in spend? And if, if funding pieces change or get eliminated. So we just heard here, you know, okay for this year, but it's gonna be an impact next year.
Right.
Because you can't fund those, those funds on par. Great, all right. Any other last-minute questions, comments, requests? Good. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, adjourn?
A second. Any part of the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I adjourned at seven forty-seven.